Because I thought they had access to the.
No.
My email account.
Nope.
But, okay, that makes you feel a lot better.
That's right. And that's what Tony, let Tony know on Friday afternoon. Oh, I don't think he has anything to worry about as long as nobody quit done anything.
Nope.
Yeah, I was probably overreacting. Tell Tony to cancel.
Shut it off.
Tell him to shut down City Hall. I didn't even get mine till Sunday when I got back from the lake.
You didn't need to give cards anymore by then?
No.
No, he wasn't asking me to give gift cards.
Or were you supposed to?
Nope, he was asking me, he needed a, he needed my help with something for a second. So I figured he wanted to talk to me about something. So then I kept on calling him back and calling back, just said, call me. And then it's almost like, you know.
Weird.
Yeah, same with Ju- Justin got the same one. He called me today, hey, sorry, didn't get back to you, we need buddy. But it's all right. All right. Seven AM. On April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and we'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 Yes, here. Well, Hicks up there.
Oh, Anthony's on. Here.
Here.
We have a quorum. Uh, first item of discussion this morning is soccer field use fees. And we'll call on our Public Works Director, Guy Taylor. Good morning, Guy.
Good morning, y'all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back last fall, when we were discussing, um, the fee schedule, there was a discussion around exempting youth baseball from field use fees. We inadvertently didn't include a youth soccer in that discussion. So just presenting to you this morning, a request to exempt that, uh, youth soccer association from field use fees.
Sure. And I know that, um, just real briefly, the part of the discussion last fall was that the, the Youth Baseball Association was a partner. They raised some funds, they took its maintenance and stuff, and Youth Soccer Association is in the same boat, so.
Very similar.
If, if you remember last year, it was kind of one of those things, youth baseball was here and it wasn't, uh, yeah, like you say, it was inadvertent that we think we, in my opinion, that we left it off. So thanks for bringing this forward, Guy, and we could do that with a motion to the council. Uh, Jim, thank you. Krista, any questions or discussion from the council? I guess we'll do a roll call. With Anthony. Sorry, Lynn. All right, roll call, please.
Yes.
Here. Yes.
Yes.
President accounted for.
And I'm here to say yes.
Here. Yes.
Yes.
Everyone is president and accounted for. And that motion carries. Uh, item number two is a bicycle pedestrian master plan update. And again, we'll call on Guy Taylor.
Thank you, Your Honor. So back in June, uh, a working group started working on a bike and ped master plan. It's being led by Anto- Antonio Rosell from Community Design Group. He's online, he's gonna go through this. It's an update on the plan. Uh, it's in a review stage right now and, um, we'll come back for, uh, recommendation to the council to accept the plan at a later date.
Okay. Thank you, Guy. Good morning, Antonio.
Uh, good morning, good morning, City Council, Mayor's. Mayor, it's a wonderful opportunity to be here with you this morning. Uh, and, and, and thank you for the chance to meet with you and tell you a little bit, uh, about the pedestrian and bicycle, uh, master plan. So I have a quick little presentation to, uh, share with you. So I'll start sharing my screen if that will work. And, uh, let's see, we'll get it, uh, running. And I know time is, is short, so I'll just be, uh, very quick providing an overview. I've had the pleasure of working, uh, with Lynn, with your city, other city staff, and residents and advocates in your community now, uh, for several months. Uh, and we've been working on developing this, uh, bicycle and pedestrian master plan for your city. Um, we have a draft that we have, uh, developed and it's, it's the first draft of what I anticipate will be, uh, maybe a total of one or two, uh, uh, total drafts that we will develop. And what we're doing is compiled all of the guidance and all of the information, uh, received thus far and are, uh, getting that information, uh, that document compiled and under review by the members of the steering committee. Now, we've worked with a group of your residents and staff over the last eight months or so, um, uh, meeting monthly and reviewing and developing the recommendations that go into this, uh, into this document. Our process for developing the plan has been, uh, you know, has been a little bit challenging. If, if this were any other time, we would have had a lot of meetings in person and have discussed over maps and had, uh, have a lot of, uh, in-person communication. But of course, when, uh, we began work on the plan, the, uh, pandemic was just getting into high gear. And so we were able to pivot, uh, we had to pivot and when we were able to very effectively and we're working collaboratively with the project steering committee to, uh, move to an online, to an, uh, an online strategy for the work. Uh, we had a, a, a project website that was available where we were interacting with residents of Fergus Falls. Uh, and placing a lot of the information related to the plan and the tools for participation. Uh, we had, uh, uh, you know, uh, this, this, on the, on your screen now, there's an image of, uh, what is called a Wiki map, which is an interactive map that runs on Google Maps. And people were, uh, logging in and placing, uh, points, dots, uh, lines of routes, for example, that they, they want the plan to address as potential routes, locations where there were issues, uh, for example, that needed to be addressed. Uh, we had a survey as well that had great participation from the Fergus Falls community, asking people about their preferences, their experiences about walking and bicycling, uh, in the city. You know, through the different months of the year. And, uh, we had also a pretty active social media campaign that invited people to, uh, the tools that we, uh, had made available. And so we were able to have great participation. The survey that I showed you a little bit ago, uh, you know, over three hundred participants. We had, uh, a lot of comments that came in through that interactive map. We had over a thousand visitors to the project website and we had, uh, online, uh, workshops, which I, I, I guess is the way that we're doing workshops for a while, uh, although hopefully we're coming out of it, uh, uh, pretty soon. So, um, uh, you know, pretty robust participation, uh, to help us with the project itself and the recommendations and orientation of the project. And, and how did we orient the project? Well, um, very simply, uh, recognizing the assets that you already have in the community as a first and foundational step. Uh, you've made tons of investment over, o- o- over the years, have a very committed, uh, city structure. So, um, you know, council, of course, but, uh, you know, your staff, your engineering staff, public works. Um, it's a lot of planning also that has occurred in the city. So working with that planning that you've already completed, uh, those investments in planning, but also community work, uh, like, for example, uh, the work that Pedal Fergus Falls has been doing, your Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee as well, and rolling that information into the plan here on your screen, for example, from your Safe Routes to School Plan that you completed in two thousand and twelve. Recommendations from that plan rolling, uh, into our plan. And then all of the programming efforts, all of the education and encouragement efforts that as a community, uh, you have been sponsoring and supporting. You know, and your designation as a bicycle-friendly community, for example, all of that work that has gone into that. Um, the way that, that we approached the work on the plan was to bring all of those ideas and all of the recommendations in. Uh, another kind of foundational approach for the plan is thinking about what is called the Active Living Approach. And this is generally, uh, a way to describe it. I'll just show you some images from different places where we've, uh, worked. What is an Active Living Approach? It's basically, um, orienting our communities and the way that we approach transportation to recognize that, you know, what if we made it easy for people to just simply, as part of their daily lives, be able to walk and bike to their places? Uh, you know, to develop innovative treatments, like, for example, mobility hubs within communities, to help our children to, uh, walk or bike safely and comfortably, uh, to their schools as part of their everyday, uh, activity. How do we better connect to the assets that we have, the trails, the different, uh, natural assets in our community? How do we help, uh, our children learn to interact with our transportation system more safely? And how do we do that? Uh, of course, being in Minnesota, how do we do that in a way that works year-round? And it's not just a summertime activity, but it's a year-round activity. And what are some of the ways in which we can support our, uh, for example, our maintenance, our, uh, Public Works Departments? How do we, uh, make efficient use of the monies that we have while also supporting, uh, more of a year-round use for these assets? Finally, another component of, of our approach is this idea of, uh, all ages and abilities network. Thinking about the, the kind of, the kind of facilities that, that we put on the, on the roads or on our streets. You know, are we simply making, uh, investments that benefit a very small, uh, proportion of the population? Sometimes facilities like, uh, a, a route that doesn't have any treatments on, on the street. You know, there's a number of people that might use it, but it's a very small compared to the overall population of a community. And, uh, that majority of, of people in a community are today not, uh, feeling like it's a comfortable or a safe activity sometimes to walk across the street in some locations or to use a bicycle for some of their trips. And so, uh, we want to approach, uh, the work of the plan as, you know, let's, let's make this, uh, a really, uh, big, open and inviting activity for everybody. Seven E's approach with includes all of these, it's not just about, uh, infrastructure. That's of course a key important part, infrastructure is, but it's also about educational initiatives. It's about how do we evaluate if we're accomplishing our goals? How do we address equity in our investments? And also an additional E that is, uh, is, uh, engagement. And how do we, uh, invite people to, uh, participate and, uh, use these assets? Now, next steps, uh, for, for the plan, uh, there's a couple of things. We are, uh, in this process now of review of the document with the project steering committee. And, uh, again, this committee has been super active, uh, working with me on development of, of the document. And we've been meeting monthly and they are, uh, reviewing it now for the next, uh, week or so. Uh, we'll make improvements on the document, uh, and there's additional information that we'll be placing as well. So there'll be a new draft that comes out. And after that draft is, again, reviewed by the steering committee, uh, we'll put it out to the public, uh, to have their comments. And once we receive their comments, we'll have a final version as well. And I believe that, um, you know, uh, well, as soon as, as we have the, this, this draft that we're working on, you know, this next, uh, next iteration, we'll be sharing it with you for your review so that you can, uh, uh, provide your guidance, uh, as well. Other components that, uh, we're also, uh, uh, we're going to be publishing soon is, uh, you know, we have a toolbox of facilities and treatments, so it's kind of an appendix to the plan. Uh, that's also, uh, uh, you know, kind of in the, in the finishing stages right now. And this is kind of more detailed guidance about what kind of facilities to apply where. And with that, I, it's my presentation for today, uh, and I don't know if you have any questions. I don't want to take up too much of your time, uh, today.
Thank you, Antonio. Questions from the council, staff? Comments? Okay, thank you, Antonio. We look forward to the continued work of the committee and thanks, uh, to all the local people for the dedicated time. I know that committee has put in a lot of time to go through this process and the staff as well. Thanks, Brian, to your team, um, for being a part of that. Thanks, Antonio.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for inviting me to be here, here with you today. Bye-bye.
Have a nice day.
You too have a wonderful.
All right, item number three is, uh, airport entitlement funds. We'll call our city engineer, Brian Uvar. Morning, Brian.
Hey, thank you. Good morning, Your Honor, members. Uh, I'll go over for you as regards to the Fergus Falls Airport and a transfer to, uh, Red Wing Regional, um, Airport. Just to give you a little background, the Fergus Falls Municipal Airport, like a lot of Minions classification, receives a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the air, FAA entitlement funds to use towards eligible expenses at air, at their airports. We can accrue up to six hundred thousand dollars. So essentially, we can bank up to three years and our fourth year have a capacity of six hundred thousand dollars. If they're not expended by the airport, they're, they're turned back to the FAA and put into an FAA discretionary funding account that can be used for larger projects, but that's up to just discretion of the FAA. So with the overall increase of project costs, Minnesota airports have the option to transfer their entitlement dollars from one Minnesota community to another that may need these entitlement dollars. This ability to transfer allows the funding to stay in Minnesota and it's not, like, like you said, stay in Minnesota and it's not disseminate or distributed back into the national, uh, pot of money. Uh, the city currently has a balance of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't plan on doing any projects this year. We are planning next year, perhaps some preventive maintenance projects. And, but we fe- feel, uh, that can be done more on a value, volume added if we do it at the following year. Since we don't need to access this money, Red Wing Regional Airport has requested transfer of our hundred and fifty thousand dollars to their airport. Uh, they have a larger project, similar like the Ferg- city of Fergus Falls has in the past. And part of this is a transfer agreement. If approved, they will pay back the hundred and fifty thousand the following year, back when we love to do one of our pavement projects. Uh, this can be done quite simply with the attached form provided by the FAA. This is an agreement solely between, uh, the city of Fergus Falls and Red Wing Regional Airport. So at this time, I'm requesting authorization to transfer that this year's hundred and fifty thousand dollars of Fergus Falls Municipal Airport entitlement funds to the Red Wing Regional Airport.
Thank you, Brian.
For any questions you may have.
So essentially, we're just being a good neighbor, barring them the funds, well, we don't need them and gonna get them back next year.
Yes. And if I can, I can just give you a little history about it, because I've had, have some little, um, questions about this. And just to give you a little background with this project and what we've done in the past. And I looked it up and I think we've been doing this. I just want to point out one project we started that I recall back, uh, we transferred some expiring funds to Bumidji, about sixty thousand dollars. But the more important project, well, you did one in two thousand and sixteen. And some of you can recall, we acquired a large piece of equipment, some old equipment. That equipment loan was a half a million dollars. Plus we did a taxi lane, so we had a really large project. We did not have enough funds at the time. Uh, but I want to point out this SRE equipment was a big, big need, large need, significant need for our airport, for airport operations. It was funded by the feds at ninety percent rate, five percent was state and the remaining five percent was local funds. So in two thousand and sixteen, we could look through some of the memos, but, uh, we had a transfer of same entitlement funds. The city of Two Harbors, Glenwood and Princeton, uh, loaned the city their entitlement dollars. That capacity was three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So without the same effort amongst Minnesota communities, we would not have had the ability to, um, acquire some of the SRE equipment. I just want to note, these funds have been repaid and our, our current balance is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Brian. Questions from?
I'm just out of curiosity, how much do we accrue from the FAA a year on?
Uh, on these, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Oh, year we get.
Of our classification, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Someone like to offer that? We could do that by, uh, motion to the council. Thank you, Brent. Thanks, Scott. Any questions? For Brian? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That motion is approved. Thank you, Brian. Uh, next item on the agenda is a stormwater drainage easement request for twelve twenty-two North Tower Road.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, this is a recent project, but representatives from West Tool and Design contacted city staff. They're planning a building expansion at their site located at twelve twenty-two North Tower Road. Uh, they're proposing, I, I believe, the addition approximately eighty by sixty feet. Through this conversation, we determined that there was some need for some storm sewer, uh, modifications. Currently, stormwater runoff, we have a cul-de-sac adjacent to First Avenue North. The water from our street drains through via curb cut onto their property, across their property into the railroad right away. I've attached a drawing to try to give you a little bit illustration of what we're trying to accomplish here. We know, this is, this is an issue because it was inhibit and be direct path of their proposed, uh, their proposed building site. Because this, we did, city staff, we developed alternative design, showing in the illustration there. I do not have it on the board. Uh, but this design that we're proposing will be consistent, instead of overland, it'll be a combination of inserting a catch basin, some storm sewer piping and then redirecting it into, uh, the railroad right away. The owner with that we're working with and their representative understands this, uh, they're also be willing to enter into a utility easement that would also be needed for this project. Uh, so if approved, we're estimating construction costs of about approximately three, thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, this could be funded through the Storm Sewer Enterprise Fund. However, this will be brought back to the council, uh, once we get actual dollars and then once, uh, come in from the West Tool Design to of their intentions as well. So at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting authorization to solicit for quotes and authorization of staff to execute a stormwater drainage easement at this time.
Thank you, Brian. And we could bring that to the council by motion. Thanks, Caroline. Thanks, Krista. Questions, Scott, do you have questions?
Just a quick question for you, Brian. The map that you provided has Cedar Avenue listed on there, but that isn't an actual paved street, but would be, uh, maybe a future development at some point or, cause that, you know, is that coming to play here at all as to what might be planned for Cedar Avenue?
Well, Cedar is, remember, Quamie, that, uh, Cedar is paved. It's not quite a really a developed urban section, it's more of a narrower section, but it is paved. The best of my knowledge.
It is, yeah.
And, but it just dead ends, then it doesn't go.
It kind of curves around on to.
Yeah.
Is that where all those townhomes?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's my word.
Yes. So a portion of Cedar is contributing, because, uh, based on the topography, I remember right, a portion of it's draining to that particular cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And it possibly is contributing to what's going on to West Tool Designs property.
And there isn't any intention for this work to end up in the assessments for any of the neighbors there or?
No, no. This is, uh, this, what we believe this is a hundred percent city.
Oh, Americans. All right. So, thank you. Other, other questions? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That motion is approved and we'll bring that to the council on Monday night. Uh, item number five is Public Improvement three, three, uh, five, three, three, seven and five, three, three, eight, which is Millen Overlay Project for the two thousand and twenty-one, uh, Seal Coat Improvement and Millen Overlay. So I'll call on Brian Uvar.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yes, we've been evaluating local candidates that will receive a Batumus Overlay and Seal Coat application. Uh, that we have an illustration of on the board right now. Uh, these are the, the proposed streets. We are looking to receive this application. Just note, these are annual applications, uh, Millen Overlay and Seal Coat. We levy on an annual basis. Uh, these, I just want to note, um, these are somewhat larger in what we have for budgetary needs. We have budgetary constraints, uh, I did, if you please can look at the area, I kind of have it hatched over. It's more in the Vasa area, uh, west of Union. We have, that's our, what we're looking at for some Millen Overlay streets. However, those have driven on some of those streets, there are some that are very tough condition. We are looking to maybe reconstruct a few small portions and overlay as well. We quite haven't determined, that's gonna be determined on, once again, what our budgetary, uh, allows us to do. Also, outlined in the yellow on the map, that's our Seal Coat locations. A lot of these streets, I just want to note, a lot of these streets were, are reconstructed back in two thousand and sixteen or overlay. Our attempt is try to get some of these streets seal-coated often and earlier, uh, than later. Uh, it's proven to provide better longevity for these streets. However, like you mentioned, that's a lot, large amount of streets to do a seal coat. We're still running through the numbers, but I'm confident that we can, uh, we can proceed with some of these projects. Uh, there is a lot of striping as well, voted on cascade with, uh, bike and pedestrian, uh, master plan. There will be reestablished the bike lanes, but I just want to strive for a little patience this, for, for proposing seal coats. Seal coats are, you take, uh, in general, about two weeks. We're gonna lay down, uh, uh, apply the mastic and then we will be applying this chip seal rock over it. It sits there for two weeks. I know it's a hindrance and everything, but there has been concerns in the past. But I just want to stress, uh, that based on our budget, that this is a temporary in nature. So we will restore all the lines. I don't have a schedule as well, but anticipating some mid-late summer that we could do this work as well. So at this time, Your Honor, I'm requesting initiate both these projects, five, three, three, seven and five, three, three, eight, and also ordering the plans for both these projects, Public Improvement five, three, seven and five, three, three, eight. And I'll open up for any questions.
Thanks, Brian. I just had a couple, uh, maybe a comment and a question. You mentioned like some of these streets that had been constructed, reconstructed in two thousand and sixteen. So maybe just for the benefit of the public, sometime, not today, but sometime this spring, as we kind of go through the challenges that we go through every spring with roads, just maybe give the public an update, because that's a scientific, uh, reason that we're seal coating streets that have only been constructed. So it might appear to the public that we're simply, you know, focusing on the same streets, but what we're doing is trying to make sure that those streets get regular maintenance so they actually last longer. So maybe just the whole, um, pavement management index, the PMI.
Oh, yes.
Might, might be a good chance to update the public on how these decisions are made and, you know, just let the public know which streets are, you know, are, are selected for, for which kind of projects and, um, just the overall long-term thinking of the streets. Again, not, not this morning, but maybe it's just, maybe we should do that on an annual basis, because I know that's one thing that the public is concerned about and rightfully so, and in the spring, especially with the potholes and the conditions of the streets, not just here, but, you know, in this land that we live in up here north. And the other thing I would say is, um, when we do that, for my benefit and maybe for the benefit of the council too, you know, we have increased funding for, um, for these projects over the years, over the last four years significantly. But maybe it would be nice to know, like, this year, as we go off for these public improvement bids, what's, what are the costs, the materials and the bids that we're getting as compared to, to five years ago? So what's that, what's the money that we're putting into it now, able to do, accomplish on an annual basis versus what it was in the past? Just to make sure that we're, um, putting up, putting the right, you know, just give us an idea for putting the right, uh, portion of our budget into streets. Does that, does that make sense, kind of? Just, it doesn't, not, not today, obviously, but just at some point, just give an idea of, of, um, the mileage or, or what we're able to do with that money that we're allocating streets. Cause I know it's important, um, and we have increased the budget towards streets. We're taking, you know, taking that, uh, the public's concern for the streets into effect and just kind of just give us an idea of how much we're able to do.
That's, uh, an, an area I think that we all get the most complaints about is, is our streets.
Yeah.
It, it would be good to go over that with, with the people, just, just to let know how we actually go about which streets are going to be repaired.
Certainly.
Maybe that'd be a good, uh, to get a committee to hold, where we have some time to just, um, talk about streets and like, you know, like that. Maybe you could dive into that pavement management index report and what, what you see as the future of what might be reconstructed versus seal-coated and just, um.
Yeah, and options moving forward, yeah. And to your honor, I look forward to it, uh, and to add your comment, yes. Currently for Batumus Millen Overlays, I have in the memo here, but we're, we got about quarter million dollars, uh, two forty-four, eight hundred. I believe, yeah, four years ago, it was just about a hundred eighty, hundred and ninety thousand. So, yes, over the past four years, uh, there hasn't been significant increases to not only Millen Overlay, but to seal coat budgets as well. And that has helped.
Sure.
Has helped, gives additional, um, do some additional streets, but also do more in, uh, strategies such as redirection of some small portions of streets.
Sure. I know you've got a plan. I know it's based on science and evidence and you analyze it. I just want to make sure the public knows that too. So maybe it's just an opportunity and one of the upcoming committee, the whole meetings, to kind of go over what, uh, what your department goes into when it's thinking about an annual plan for how they address the streets, so.
Certainly, certainly.
Um, so, okay, so I.
Your Honor, can I ask a question of Brian?
Yep, absolutely, go ahead.
I mean, I've, I've had a number of people call about, uh, the hill that goes from Vine to Broadway. Last, last year, we were able to do the, you know, the opposite of Vine to Union. That, I mean, that was, was in worse condition. But do, do you know when that's on the timeline to get something done on it? Yeah, it's deteriorating at the top. On, but, um, uh, it's on Summit, Summit, uh, between Vine and Broadway.
Yes, uh, Councilmember Hicks, you are correct. Last year, we did a reconstruction on, uh, a small reconstruction. We had to replace the pavement section, uh, Summit from Vine to Broadway. We are looking farther to the. We are looking farther to the west, especially where you get to Broadway. We just about, we just reviewed those particular areas and and those, those, I don't have a definitive schedule on that particular area because with our levy amounts in our policy for our Millen overlay, I'll just give you a recap. We we go to each different ward every year. That's our first basis. And now we're going to look for some of these streets. And currently, right now, I'm like I mentioned, we're working in the southwest. When we get to that particular ward, we can definitely take a look at that street. But once again, we can have this conversation in the near future of what the city's policy is, how we distribute these funds, what areas we're looking at, and steps we could take moving forward.
Sure. Thank you, Brian. And we can, we can bring forward public improvements through 5337 and 5338 to the council for Monday night. By with the motion. Jim, offer that. Thank you, Brent. And then again, we'll look forward to maybe just an update at a future committee, the whole meeting. I think that's a worthy conversation. Any other questions of the council? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That motion is approved. Thank you, Brian. One last item for MSAS mileage for route number 12140.
Yes, thank you, your honor. I do have a map for this presentation. I just want to give you a little background. Back in 2018, the city in Otter Tail County completed a jurisdictional swap within the city limits. If you refer to the map, once again, this illustrates what roads were swapped. So currently ones outlined in yellow, part of the Alcott, Cascade, Freiburg, those were once county jurisdictional streets. Those are exchanged. Those are now city jurisdictional streets, Tower Road and Fur Avenue once were city streets and now they're the county's jurisdiction. So that happened back in 2019. That has been approved by the commissioners. We're just doing some final audits of this jurisdictional swap. And it was determined that due to this mileage exchange that where the city is over above the 20% limits of street mileage that is allowed to be placed on the municipal state aid street system per Minnesota rules. This with this, because of this, state aid has contacted and we've worked collaboratively to we got to reduce our designated mileage by 0.60 miles to remain in compliance with Minnesota rules. The attached map also show on rate here, based on our system, and they haven't received any recent MSA funds too, because that's a component of our decision making. But we're currently at the time to be in compliance. I am recommending that we revoke MSAS Route 120, which is Sherman Street, Lincoln Avenue to Washington. That's 0.08 miles. And the second one is MSA Route Douglas 140, Douglas Avenue. This is from Pebble Lake Road to Trump Highway 210. That mileage is 0.53 miles. With these two revocations, we could, we would be in compliance. That would be a total of 0.61 miles. We needed that as an 0.60 miles. So we would have remaining 100th mile to designate. However, I don't believe we were denoting anything at that time. So at this time, your honor, I'm going to open to any questions, but the action before you is to revoke MSA Routes number 120 and 140.
Thanks, Brian. We can do that through a motion to send that to the council on Monday night. Thanks, Caroline. Thanks, Jim. And then if anyone has any ideas for that one 100th of a mile, we'll. Any questions for Brian? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 That motion is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I don't know of any other items to come before the committee this morning. Brent doesn't have any announcements. Andrew, you have anything? All right. With that, next council meeting is Monday night, April.